All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody coming tonight, special village board meeting. Call the roll, please.
Trusty Spurling.
Here.
Trusty Lee.
Here.
Trusty Hines.
Here.
Trusty Youngerman.
Here.
Trusty Marisack.
Here.
Trusty Bond.
Here.
Everybody's present. Thank you. Under public participation, this is the two-minute opportunity for any member of the public that's here that wishes to address the board on any topic. Is there anybody this evening? There's no age requirement, so if it's a two-year-old, that's fine. All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. We have nothing for the consent, so move on to items for separate action. We have ordinance seventeen thirty-seven, amending the village code regarding Class J temporary liquor licenses. This is a waiver of the first and passage on the second. With that, I'll ask Attorney Anderson for a summary.
Thank you. Per the board's direction at the last meeting, we prepared an amendment to the Class J, which are the temporary liquor license classification, that would allow for an extra class, if you will, or an extra category within the classes, perhaps the more appropriate way to say it, of groups that can apply for and receive a temporary liquor license. Currently, there are only basically your not-for-profit beneficial organizations. This would add a second category, which are political, and it would be for anything that is of a political nature, as long as the group organizing it is a recognized political committee. Those are recognized by the State Board of Elections or by federal law. I don't know the federal law as well, but I know the state law very well, and that's not something that you can get around. At the last meeting, one of you, I honestly don't remember who it was who brought it up and said, "Well, can't you get around this just by saying me and a group of buddies are a political organization?" This limitation that we've crafted into it would resolve that issue and ensure that the people who are applying for it are legitimate. It could be used either for fundraising or non-fundraising. In other words, just if a political group wanted to get together and do this without regard to fundraising, they could do it either way. So that's basically what it does. There's no obligation for you to pass this. It was an idea that might address a need.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
So you must be registered, either by state or whatever federal regulations?
Correct. Either the State Board of Elections or the federal, I don't know if they're called the Board of Elections, but the Federal Election Commission, I think, would have to recognize your political committee in order to qualify for this. I can tell you that virtually every elected official who runs for office has one of these at either the state or the federal level.
Okay. Thank you.
This would all, all of the requirements of our temporary liquor license would be, you know, subject of a person that they wanted this to, so it's not like, these are the only requirements. We have other requirements for different things that we would still require for this.
This liquor license will go, for example, if it's George's Restaurant, it would, the liquor license would be with that restaurant or with that entity, that government, the elected entity?
With the entity.
Okay. Where's the insurance come in?
Insurance is required by other parts of the ordinance.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be at a restaurant. It could be at...
Does not.
X private property, anywhere in the village, really.
It could.
Okay, that was kind of where my question was going. I was thinking that Riverview, and now that you mentioned George's, would be the two restaurants that have the room to do that, but don't currently have liquor licenses. And I was thinking, well, couldn't this be solved by having them come in and have, apply for the liquor licenses? Well, particularly Riverview, because they have the room, you know, they have the meeting room. But you're saying this can be anywhere in the village?
As long as it meets the criterion, yes.
And is that, that applies for the other entities that were currently in there, correct?
It does. I think you'll find that that would be very rare to occur, because usually events of this sort need a place, you know, like Riverview Diner, or a room where they can host it. Having it at somebody's house is typically not, not the case, but it's not impossible.
In the last year, I think we've had requests from Earth Movers Credit Union that they've pulled back. They decided they didn't want it. The, trying to think where else. We had a couple of other ones that weren't restaurants.
Dixon Merst Farms.
Dixon Merst Farms.
Comes to mind, yeah. And this, the length of this license is only for the length of the event, or is it for a set day, or?
I think the max is three days, Chief, yes? Three days max, but typically it's issued for the event.
Okay.
And for the political one, if I'm reading this correctly, the way it's drafted, it has to be for the next election cycle?
Correct. That's an important point. I did draft it that way. Doesn't have to be that way. It could be for generalized things, but I thought, again, with the concerns I was hearing, I tried to keep it as narrow as possible. You will note, though, that I wrote it in the context of either a candidate for office or a political question, because it is possible to have referendum questions that someone might want to hold a fundraiser for.
And it's specific to being on the ballot for our residents?
Correct. In other words, somebody running for office in Arizona could not get this license in Montgomery, just as an extreme example, but yes.
Thank you, Steve. Looks good.
Thank you.
I, I'm struggling with this one. So I'd actually like to hear from the other board members who think this is a benefit to do this, if you can shed some light on it formally, because I really, again, I think it can be solved by either having, in this particular case, Riverview come in and get the license, or potentially have the person who was requesting it hold it at a different venue that currently has a license, or have it at Riverview and not serve alcohol. I'm not getting the benefit of adding the political, so I'd like to hear those that think it is.
One other, from the previous conversations, is Riverview has no interest in getting a liquor license. He's clearly stated that he's not doing it. He doesn't want one. But yet, every time someone goes there, he says, "Go to Village Hall," and sends them over.
Right.
For us to then have to say no to them.
My question is, though, how does it benefit the village to add political organizations to the ordinance?
I don't think it's any different than the, you know, your fraternal orders can have them now, non-for-profit organizations, which really, a political organization is just another non-for-profit arm. It's just another column, so to speak, of, it's not a real big stretch. It's just designating that one a little bit differently, that it's a candidate, because they're not a registered non-for-profit.
And it has definitely occurred before where the politicals have had fundraisers in town, have gone to a location that does have a liquor license.
Right.
That keeps the focus of those events pretty narrow to the ten or twelve entities that have that kind of liquor license in our village. If they wanted to hold a similar event at Dixon Merst Farm, and the farm is okay with that, of course, they could hold that same type of event in a different venue. I think it gives another option for people who are trying to work really hard to knock on doors and meet people, just to have one other opportunity to meet people. I think we can all speak from experience that knocking on doors doesn't exactly get you that much, you know, in terms of quantities of people. So having, I think, other options for these kinds of events are fine. I was excited, I guess, to see the stats from our area towns, just to see if this was something that nobody else had. You can see that almost all of our neighboring communities, with the exception of Sugar Grove, do allow this type of ordinance. You know, I haven't heard any issues there over the years, so I think it just provides another method, another opportunity, that certainly people don't have to.
It's the possibility of a different type of venue.
Right.
And maybe bigger, because Dixon Merst will certainly hold more than George's Restaurant.
Right.
So maybe more opportunity to hear from different, different sides, as far as political sides. I think Trusty Bond hit the nail on the head last time when he said that there are political discussions happening that may not necessarily happen here, because we may, we don't have this, and we can't provide this opportunity.
Okay. That's the piece I was missing, that it could be held at different venues other than a restaurant. That's why I didn't understand why we were having the conversation, when it just seemed like it could be solved so much easier than changing the ordinance. I typically, I'm very hesitant to change an ordinance, and that's why I was asking to hear from my other board members, because I just thought I have to be missing something in this conversation. So, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
I would offer an opinion that the likelihood that this type of event would be a problem or get out of hand is extremely remote, because a political candidate's got their name all over it, so I don't see it introducing any new issues to the village, to argue the point from the negative side, I suppose.
Thank you.
I would not expect that either, some big brawl at the candidates.
No other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marisack.
Yes.
Trusty Bond.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
Trusty Hines.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. All right, moving on, we have ordinance seventeen thirty-eight, amending the village code regarding fireworks, and this is a waiver of first and passage on the second. With that, I'll ask Chief of Police Dan Myers for a summary.
Thank you very much. In the last several months, I've been in contact with Elgin Police Department. They created an ordinance in early summer that, that allowed the police department officers to ticket the homeowner or a property owner of a location where fireworks were displayed and/or shot off, or upon a complaint, officers arrived on the scene and found paperwork contraband from the fireworks that had been lit off. This ordinance will allow us to cite the homeowner or the property owner and take that right to civil, we'll stay away from criminal court, and we'll put it on a compliance ticket, which will allow it to go through the village. If they don't pay it, then we'll add it to their water bill through their service account. So I think it's another tool that will help us combat some of these fireworks complaints that we've had. This past summer, Elgin used it around July 4th weekend and issued seventeen compliance tickets for that violation, so it's very effective, according to the commander I talked to.
Thank you.
Chief, may I ask a question? As it reads currently, does the officer have to see the fireworks without even looking at these changes? How do we do it now?
Oh, the, yes. Currently, our officer has to witness the person that lights the fireworks, and that very rarely happens. We always are responding, most likely, to a call from KenCom that a neighbor called in and gave us the location.
And just one clarification, Chief is certainly correct, but the other possibility, it's rare, is that if you had a complaint at someone who saw it, who's willing to testify, that would be the other way to prove the case.
And I think that was something we discussed a while back about, yes. Thank you.
I have a question, if I may. Going on Trusty Spurling's comments, if something, if the officer has to see it, it's, fireworks are illegal in the state of Illinois, correct?
They are.
Why do they have to see them actually set off the firework for it to be a violation?
Well, if I can jump in there.
Sure, sure.
I think there's a number of different things you could be charged with. I think you can be charged with probably possession of fireworks as well, but again, you'd have to see somebody holding it. It's not much different than illegal possession of drugs. We either have to see it happening or see possession of it. No different than speeding. We have to observe you speeding to be able to prosecute you for it. So this amendment changes that in a very small way for a very localized issue, but currently, it's like every other charge, you know, that you have to see the crime. And it's not simply the officer. Like I said, it could be a witness, but isn't necessary.
And now, because just, because I saw the areas in red that we were changing.
Sure.
Come back to me. Let me, let me formulate my question.
Any other questions?
Is there a provision that would allow entrance to the property on probable cause or suspicion, you know, if the fireworks are being set off in the backyard or the side yard?
So, so at present, the state of the law in Illinois is that it's not a criminal trespass to go onto someone else's property unless one of two circumstances exists. One, the property's posted no trespassing. The second is that you've been verbally advised not to enter the property. So actually, you know, pretty much in the absence of that, you can go onto somebody's property. It's technically a trespass, but it's a civil trespass. Now, I think the police officers will generally be somewhat hesitant to invade people's property absent some more compelling interest, but it's not technically illegal for them to do so.
Okay.
In this, I just want to clarify, because of what the chief said, it's, it's not just the property owner, it's if you're the tenant, if you hold the lease to the property, you're in control of the property, you're responsible. But I don't believe you're responsible if your kids are in the backyard and you're unaware that they're, you're not home. If you're not home and your kids are shooting off fireworks, you can't write them the ticket.
No, actually, it's designed for exactly that.
That you can.
Right.
That you could.
It's another level of accountability. So right now, if an officer pulled up to a house and there were fireworks there, they, they could write them for possession of fireworks, but now if fireworks go off, it's the homeowner or whoever is living at that address. Is it still going to be the fact that, say, if Trusty Marisack is shooting off fireworks, and I'm there viewing these fireworks, I can still be held responsible?
Well, viewing fireworks is not illegal. Participating in some way, aiding, abetting, perhaps, but simply observing it happen is not illegal.
Then, okay, let me throw, if someone's shooting fireworks out in the street, and how do we know which house that it came from? How can we pin it on a certain house?
It just depends on where you find, under, wait, under existing law or under this proposed ordinance?
No, under, under, the proposed.
You'd find, I presume you would find the debris, oh, you're saying if they're out in the street?
Right.
Wouldn't work. You wouldn't be able to. You'd be back to where you are now, which is you'd have to prove, prove up who's actually doing it.
You could go down my, on the Fourth of July weekend, you could go down my street, and it looked like World War III, and my neighbor's here, and he can attest to that. There were people shooting fireworks off in blatant disregard of any sort of local ordinance or state law, and there, there was debris all over the street, but I don't believe there were any violations written. How many violations were written for fireworks this past Fourth of July?
You're definitely looking at the wrong guy.
Yeah, I don't have that answer. I'll have to get that for you.
I think the whole thing, and we discussed this before, was you had to see the person shooting the fireworks off. In this case, if it came out of a house, you get the homeowner, and I think that's, I know you've been talking to your brother, the fire chief, since May on this, about Elgin trying it and seeing if it did work Fourth of July, and as you said, it worked in Elgin Fourth of July.
Right.
And I think that was the case all the time. You, you don't have to love your neighbor, but you've got to live next door to him. And last Fourth of July, there was one crash that I thought somebody set a bomb off in my, in my, on top of my roof, and my neighbor lives a street over, fell out of his bed and thought somebody put a bomb in his front door. Now, we knew which house it came out of, but we, in, you know, one o'clock at night, you aren't going to go out in the dark and hunt for him, and neither's a policeman. So in this case, you know where it's at, they were shooting them off regularly, a policeman could write a ticket for that, because you know what house it is. You don't know which, everybody's going to point the finger at the next guy that who lit them. So I think this is a great ordinance, if it works, because this is what everybody, and this is why a lot of times people don't call in fireworks, is I don't know which guy's shooting it off, if it's my neighbor or a friend of his over that brought the fireworks to my neighbor's house, but we know what house it is, and I think that's a lot of the case.
But here's my question, and then if Doug's shooting fireworks off, and he's my neighbor, and I call the police department, send the police department over to Doug's house, and he's already shot off his fireworks, there's no proof, because by the time you hear the bang, the evidence is gone, unless you actually see them.
I have never, in my neighborhood, they just don't shoot one off, believe me. They just keep firing. And I mean, you fire all night, so to the point where, yeah, if one guy shoots one off and you can't find that guy, that's, that's fine. I'm glad that he only shot one off, but these guys don't. They keep it up all night, and I don't mind if they shut it at ten o'clock, but they don't. They just keep going, and I think that's what's nice about this ordinance. You know, I agree with you. One guy shoots one off and hides, you're never going to find that guy, but I don't think this ordinance is for that guy.
He's not the problem.
No.
And if you do shoot these off...
Well, he, no, he is the problem, because they're going off at eleven o'clock at night, they're going off at six o'clock in the morning, they're going off after a Cubs game after they win. But let's be honest, the White Sox don't win, so they're never...
I think, just to maybe summarize just a little bit, I like the fact that this takes it, takes it one notch up, another level of accountability from those who live in, in the village, whether you have people at your house, because if you ask ten people that are not in this room currently, can you get a ticket if the police come and find fireworks at your house, they would say, "Yeah, they're illegal." I think most people would believe that that currently exists now. This gives us a little bit more teeth to do that, and accountability from our residents that, you know, if you let people do this on your property, you're, you're going to end up with a ticket, which is one thing I wanted to note. The other thing is, you know, you don't hear it that often, but, and you might hear it a lot, when the fireworks go off, you know, like in my house, my dog is not really impacted by them, doesn't really care one way or the other, but there are plenty of residents who have dogs that have severe anxiety with this. We have veterans, or not, that are suffering from PTSD, small children that are sleeping, the folks that are lighting the fireworks off at all hours of the night are not thinking of that. So here we are, doing something a little bit stronger than we've done in the past, and we'll promote this ahead of next year's Fourth of July, and, and hopefully we'll ratchet it down, because I would agree with everybody that, over the past five years that I've lived on the west side of town, it has not gotten any better at all. If anything, it's gotten worse over time. And I think this is a good, a good move.
I know that it's unpopular to write a ticket for fireworks ordinance. I mean, it's Fourth of July, I understand that. For clarification purposes, Attorney Anderson, what is, what is the fines, what is the fine structure right now for a violation? And are we talking about changing any of the fines with this new ordinance, or keeping existing?
At present, we're, we're not talking about changing any of them. There's two tiers, if you will. There's the compliance ticket system that the chief referred to, and he indicated that that's where the majority of these would go. On the other hand, and I honestly don't know where that one falls right now. Chief, do you happen to know?
Yes, it would, it's seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars. But if you have SCOTF laws, if you have repeat offenders, certainly the, the police still has the discretion to write it as an ordinance violation that would go into court, and then the fine is anywhere from zero to seven hundred and fifty dollars per violation.
I would argue that seventy-five dollars for an initial violation is not high enough. I would go to...
That's honestly for you, you all to debate.
I would go up to a hundred and fifty or two hundred for the first violation.
Well, since we haven't wrote any, as you said in years, I'm happy with seventy-five to make it stick. That's the whole...
And I, I would agree with that. I don't think we're, you know, if I'm, if I know it's seventy-five and I'm still going to do it, because I spend three hundred dollars on my fireworks, I'd probably do it a hundred. I think that, I generally like to think that the fees or the fines that we charge people ought to be fair and reasonable, in my opinion, that, you know, just charging two hundred dollars because we can for that kind of a ticket. Let's send the message to individuals, hey, it's seventy-five dollars, it's not going to put you out of your house, you're going to pay that ticket, and then next year, come Fourth of July, they're going to remember that I got all my fireworks taken away, and I got a ticket last time, and this time it will be higher. So let's just start sending that message with a compliance ticket, and we'll see how that goes next year.
I, earlier this, this morning, I reached out to a friend of mine who's the chief in Elgin. I happen to know him, so I reached out to him and asked him how this went, like a real world, like, did this give your officer some teeth that it worked? And he said, "Yes." Their numbers were way down this year, much better. Another component that he threw in there is if you've been warned or had a call, not that I want to give our officers any additional work in administration, but they send a letter prior to the Fourth of July that your address has been flagged, and there will be no warnings. You will get the ticket immediately. And he said that component also figured in, and he thinks helped with the deterrent, because now you've been flagged. We know who you are, we know you've had this before, you know, don't shoot them off this year, because we're, we're watching you. So again, I'm not sure from an administrative standpoint, well, how much paperwork that would involve sending those letters out, but I received one of those from you once for my vehicle being seen exceeding the speed limit on Mayfield, and I can tell you, it, it actually got my attention. I felt like Big Brother was watching, but it did get my attention to get a letter from the chief of police saying, "Hey, we know who you are, and watch it. We're watching you."
If, if I get a ticket in two thousand and sixteen for fireworks, and then I do it again in two thousand and seventeen, is it an increased fine, or is it the seventy-five dollar fine again?
Right now, it's seventy-five dollars unless the police department determines to write it as the local ordinance violation, then it goes to the next tier up, which is anywhere from zero, I'm just telling you the spread, zero to seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the person has to take a day off because they have to go to court.
And that fine is determined by the judge?
Correct.
So it could be seventy-five dollars.
It could be.
Or it could be zero.
Or it could be zero, or it could be seven hundred and fifty.
Okay.
I think it helps, because sometimes a resident is shoved by some relative or friend that says, "Hey, I've seen them shoot off in Montgomery, why don't we bring them down to my big backyard?" And, and then the guy gets stuck with the ticket. He's going to say to his relative or friend, "Hey, I got stuck with this ticket. My house is in limbo now. You pay the ticket, not me," and I think it's a good deterrent.
If for some reason they didn't pay the, the ticket, and it eventually goes onto their water bill when it's not paid, their water is shut off. In order to be considered a habitable residence, it needs to have running water. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, I'm not going to get into, I don't, I don't have those regulations memorized. I don't think we'd be talking about evicting people from their houses, so to speak, but yes, I mean, you do need water.
Okay.
It would, yeah, it would follow the normal protocol when you owe the village money.
After a certain number of days, we would contact the health department to let them know. If the people can show they're bringing in a sufficient amount of water through some other source, then, then continue to...
I would hope and all but guarantee that if somebody got a firework ticket, we wouldn't be shutting off their water and kicking them out of their house.
Could I clarify a point again about observers or witnesses? Under the new language, would someone who observed this be able to be party to a complaint?
Yes. We still have, if you pass this, you still have all the conventional ways of proving the case, and I would argue those are still the better way if you can get it. So absolutely, I think the police would want that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. Absolutely.
Any other scenarios that anybody wants to run through?
Yes, mine, where I said if I walk past your house and I let a brick of fireworks and throw them in your front yard, the evidence is in your front yard, you weren't even home.
Yes, that, that would technically, that person could, could receive a ticket for this. However, the counter would be that I think that the officer's discretion is always paramount. In other words, if they investigate and they determine that that's exactly what happened, I doubt they'll ever write the ticket.
Correct, and I want to make sure that we get that on the record, that there's a, the officers have a tremendous amount of discretion at still, at this point. It's just another tool in the box for them to use.
Correct.
All right. So no other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trusty Marisack.
Yes.
Trusty Bond.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling. Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
All right, that carries six zero. Thank you. Moving on, we have no items for discussion. Does anybody have any new or unfinished? Hearing none. Plan Commission this Thursday, Village Board meeting Monday, September 12th at 7:00 P.M. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.